I call this meeting of the Southwest Licking Local Board of Education to order. This is a special meeting. So I will be reading the meeting notice. Notice is hereby given that the special meeting of the Southwest Licking Board of Education, Licking County, Ohio, on Tuesday, October 26th, 2021 at 5:00 PM, in the Southwest Licking School Board Meeting Room at 927B South Street, Pataskoala, Ohio. The purpose of this meeting will be will be request to speak on agenda items, review graduation survey results, and amend the 2021-22 school calendar. And I'd like to welcome everyone who's here in attendance. Thank you for coming tonight. I'd like to also thank all of you at home who are who are watching. After the meeting last week, I was asked by a few students to state the rules for our public meeting as many students were unaware of the rules that we follow. As we always do at every board meeting, we will be following Robert's rules. Since this is a special meeting, there will not be a public participation component tonight. This will apply to those who wish to speak publicly in the future or for those who are listed on the agenda to speak. So I'm just going to review those with you now real quickly. You'll have five minutes to address the board, and this is your five minutes. I'll give you a signal when you're at four minutes and ask you to make your closing remarks. Please address the board as a whole and not one specific individual. Additionally, we ask that you don't single out staff or children. Please listen to all commenters and don't engage in cross debate. The board will not reply or respond. Again, this is your time to speak to the board. We may take notes, but we will not respond. The board recognizes and honors free speech. We are, however, conducting official business and we need everyone in the room to stay quiet and in order so that our meeting may progress. Please don't shout out comments or attempt to speak over the business being discussed. Again, we're glad that you're here tonight, and we will begin. Let's all stand for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Jones, will you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Engel. Mrs. Moore.
Here.
Mrs. Spindler.
Here.
Mr. Zani.
Here.
Mr. Vincent.
Here, a quorum is present. We need to adopt the agenda.
Motion.
Oh, go ahead. Motion to adopt the agenda for a second.
Discussion. Mr. Jones.
Mrs. Spindler.
Yes.
Mrs. Moore.
Yes.
Mrs. Engel.
Yes.
Mr. Zani.
Yes.
Mr. Vincent.
Yes, the agenda is approved. We'll move on to request to speak on agenda items. Jennifer Yonker. Welcome.
Hi.
Thank you for coming up. If you wouldn't mind, just state your name and your address. Try to speak into the mics so the folks at home can hear you. Like I said at the beginning, you'll have five minutes. There's a little timer there, and I think it starts like flashing when you get to four, so. But we're good. Welcome and thank you.
My name is Jen Yonker, and my address is 204 Isaac Tharp Street, Pataskoala. I am a mother of a 2022 senior, as well as a 2020 graduate and a future 2027 graduate. I am here tonight to ask the board and administration to consider holding our graduation at home in our stadium, hopefully, for 2022 and beyond. I understand it was not an option on the original survey, but many parents and students and families I've spoken with in our community desire to have their graduation at home in our stadium. So one lesson, my husband and I tried it still in our voice, if that there is something that you really want to do or something to happen, it's too hard, will never be a reason not to do it. I feel like we have all heard reasons from the administration and the board of why we can't have graduation in our stadium, and many of those reasons, in so many words, are too hard. Tonight, I'd like to address some of those reasons with solutions. One reason that was given was that there was potential money lost if we held at the stadium and weather forced us inside. It was stated at the last meeting that we would be out approximately $5,000 if this occurred. The school district quoted that it would be roughly $11,000 to hold our graduation at World Harvest. So even if we lose $5,000 on a balance sheet, it looks like we're still ahead by $6,000. So how do we explain not following that amount to voters, taxpayers, and our families? To further save money, if the district committed to hosting its own ceremony, costs such as the sound system that was quoted could become a one-time expense if the district invested in it and not an expense that would occur yearly, bringing our cost of hosting graduation in our own stadium to be even less. I also want to make sure that the board understands that the $11,000 the district is willing to pay to World Harvest is not just going to have the expenses of a graduation there, but rather, there is a part of a profit in that for World Harvest. And that profit is going directly to add funds to an organization that openly supports the exclusion of a segment of our student population, the LGBTQ population. I understand that there will be no religious symbolism anywhere in the venue, but that's not what has students upset. But rather, it's about funding an organization that openly advocates against some of our students' beliefs. Would we be so willing to give funds to an organization that openly spoke out against the inclusion of certain racial populations or religious affiliations? I would like to assume no. And the second reason repeatedly given against hosting graduation in our stadium is unpredictable weather. So I propose a solution, a clearly communicated, on-the-calender rain date with expectations. For example, graduation is Saturday, May 21st at 10:00 AM. Rain date is Sunday, May 22nd at 4:00 PM. And if it rains on Sunday, then yeah, we've got to move it inside with students limited to three guests. But if this is communicate ahead of time along with those expectations of what would happen, then families would have a chance to plan for it. Talk about who would attend the indoor ceremony if necessary and what we can do with other families at home while this was taking place. Planning ahead and clearly communicating all helps those involved. And you're right, some years it's going to rain. Some years it may be too hot or too cold, and some years it's going to be absolutely perfect. Finally, last week, the same day that we received our survey about graduation that was a little persuasive towards World Harvest, we also received our weekly update from Mrs. Latowitz at the high school. In the email, she referenced, and I want to quote, "That we're working all year to build school culture and connectedness to the school community. We're taking steps like teaching and singing the alma mater, explicitly teaching and practicing student section cheers and finding ways to build goodwill and foster better relationships to strengthen the warrior community." The most obvious way of accomplishing this and completing it is building a stronger reward pardon me, building a stronger warrior community by celebrating our graduates at home in their stadium where they've spent most of their school years and created their memories. What a better way to show our students and our community that we are invested in them and proud of them and our community. To close tonight, I am hopeful that the board and the administration will hear my words and consider them, but they're not just my words. And I understand no decision made tonight is going to please everyone, but I do challenge you to listen to the community, listen to the students. Let's stop making excuses that are just too hard, and let's start to take pride in what we are building here in our beautiful facilities, our community. And let's celebrate our graduates where they should be celebrated, at home, in their stadium.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. We're now going to move on to our business items. So the review graduation survey result. Oh, oops, I always forget about them. Teamsters, anyone? Sorry. Southwest Licking Education Association? No? All right, we will now hear the survey results, so.
Oh, I guess we didn't. Do you want me to do it, or do you want to do it? I can do it if you want. Okay. Okay, so for the student survey results, we had 175 responses, which is equivalency of 48% of our seniors. We had 28% of those who participated, or 58.9%, I'm sorry. 58.9% or 103 of those responses were for the gym, which is 28% of our total senior population. 35% were for World Harvest, which is 17% of our seniors. And then 5% had no preference, which is the equivalency of 2.7% of our seniors. Can we keep going? And then on our families, we had 166 responses, which is 45.6% of our senior families. 52% said they would prefer the gym, which is 23.9% of our senior families. 43% said they would prefer World Harvest or 19.8% of our families. And 4% had no preference, which is 1.9% equivalency of our senior families.
Any questions? No? Okay. Then we need a motion to take from the table the 2021-22 school calendar amendment.
So moved.
A second.
All right. Discussion, anyone? Mr. Jones?
I think we have to call roll because we.
Yeah, discussion, yep. Okay. Go ahead.
Mr. Zani.
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler.
Yes.
Mrs. Engel.
Yes.
Mrs. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Vincent.
Yes, that is officially now on the table, and we can have a discussion. Dr. Perkins?
Well, are we, I mean, are we discussing? I guess I'm confused as to what I'm. I don't know how to.
Okay.
I'm not sure what to discuss per se.
So my understanding is what is on the table is the changing the graduation to Thursday, May 26th at World Harvest Church.
Correct.
That is what's, that's what's on the table, yes.
So we can, I think our options are we can vote on that as is.
Or we can amend it.
Or we can amend it.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
I'd like to make an amendment to the motion. I'd like to amend it that we have it at the what's the name of the Co- Co? The one in Ohio State.
The Cavelli Center. Cavelli.
Cavelli, yeah, Cavelli Center. And it'll be on the Saturday that we originally had scheduled. That's my amendment.
All right.
Are we open for discussion?
Need a second first.
We need a second.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You're fine. Is there a second? All right, maybe we'll come back to that.
Okay.
No, I appreciate that. I guess I would move that we amend it to we, obviously, there still will be some work to do, but to amend it to take World Harvest Church off of the plate? Is that?
No, we would just vote it down.
Vote it down.
Wouldn't we?
Okay.
You can vote it down or you can amend it. It's up to you how you want to.
Right.
But if we amend it, if we do that, then we could substitute another location or just.
Yes, you could amend it. Because what we're doing is amending the school calendar.
That's all we're voting on is the date.
So we want to amend the school calendar for graduation at somewhere else. If that's what you want to do.
Okay.
So you can vote it down and do a new one or amend it. It's either one. Either way, they're both going to be amendment to the school calendar, either way.
Okay.
Well.
I'll just throw it out there, and if someone seconds it, they second. I make the motion that we take World Harvest Church off of the off of the table for Thursday, May 26th. All right.
Why wouldn't we just vote on what's on the table? And then, and then create what we want after.
So that's, I guess, where I was confused. I thought if we voted it down, then we couldn't have a further discussion because it's not an agenda item. Is that not?
No, this is all about the amending the school calendar.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, so that's.
It's, okay.
So right now, we have a motion to amend the school calendar to hold graduation at World Harvest Church on May 26th.
26th.
And it's already been moved and seconded. So we could just have a roll call at this point.
Okay.
Right?
Yes.
And just for clarification, a yes vote is to
amend calendar?
Hold.
Hold it at the church.
And yeah, amend the date to the 26th.
A no vote is to not go to World Harvest, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Any other discussion? Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Moore.
No.
Mr. Vincent.
No.
Mrs. Engel.
No.
Mrs. Spindler.
No.
Mr. Zani.
No.
Okay. So it will not be at World Harvest Church. Guess now we can begin a discussion, maybe? Is that where we are?
So right now, the calendar is still exactly where it was on May 21st.
At Cavelli Center.
Well, that, is that what it currently says? Okay.
Couple of thoughts, if I may.
Sure.
Looking at projected graduates. This year, it's showing 338. Next year's 365.
That's this year.
I'm sorry?
The 2022, that's this year.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. So we're already up to 365. And then it's probably going to, I would assume, go higher year after year. One thing is locking in a location that can handle a lot of people. And I know that the concerns that I've heard is that can my grandparents and my brothers and sisters all attend this ceremony? And with going to the Cavelli Center, then that would assure that we have enough tickets that probably could go around to most, most of the family members. Also, we're looking down the road at locking in a facility that can accommodate us. And I think this, if we went ahead and secured this year, then we could look at options for future years going down the road. The concerns I see with doing it at our school would be nice, but the darn weather and with the climate change and stuff, it's just going to be hard to predict a non-beautiful sunny day that's going to accommodate us out on the football field. So those are my concerns and my thoughts. And I think going down the road, it'd be nice to lock in a facility because we've been talking about this for several years, about a facility big enough to handle us. And that would be a reason to go into the Cavelli Center to lock in future years and guarantee that everybody can attend.
Is it my understanding that the Cavelli Center will not do multiple-year contracts?
This is not for this year. This is the first year they've done that. It would be new to them.
So dollar-wise, what are we looking at with Cavelli?
So it's around $25,000.
And what does that 25 get you?
That is the, well, obviously, the rental of the facility. That would be your audio, your streaming. You're also having to pay for I can't think of the other. I think they're called redcoats, but they're ushers that help the families. The ticketing, the handicap accessible ramp, which is 1,500, not 7,000 as originally quoted. Am I missing anything? Nope.
And parents would have to pay to park, correct?
Correct.
And that was $10?
$10, yes.
And they would have a concession stand open?
They would.
And we have no say in some of these things, right?
We do not.
Like, I don't understand why we'd need ushers.
Well, we asked that question as well. So I think it's because we're the first one using it that, you know, and our turn will be their, kind of their guinea pigs. But I also think they said for every event, they have the redcoats. So it's not something they've not had. So they're not willing to not have them until they try it.
I mean, I guess they make better sense than the concessions and the ticket taking.
I guess the concerns that I have with the Cavelli Center, number one is the dollar amount. I think that's a lot of money to throw out there. And that's kind of, that's what gives me, that's one of the things that gives me concern there. $25,000, I mean, that is what we asked the community for a greenhouse. And we're, to me, that is something we'd spend in an afternoon. And while, yeah, I've been in the conversations about having it off-campus, guess I didn't realize it was this much. Or it just, I don't know, it seems like a lot. The other thing that I was hearing from people in the community is they, they want this to be on our campus. And I feel like we did such a nice job last year. That's kind of the precedent people are looking at. And that's kind of, I think, what they're, they're wanting. Now, with that said, I think there are accommodations that could be made. I mean, if we did it in the evening when it wasn't as hot, then, you know, maybe, maybe that could work if we used our stadium. Or, because if we used our stadium, roughly, how many tickets would a family get?
Four.
Four. And that's just the one set of bleachers or both set of bleachers? If we put it in like the end zone?
That's the home bleachers.
Okay. So if we utilize both sets of bleachers, they would obviously get?
If we could, if the sound company thought we could make that work.
Okay. Or if we moved it indoors to the gym, we would, families would get three tickets for the gym itself.
Correct, because a portion of the gym you lose when you put the stage. Yeah, okay.
But we also would, if we did that and we livestreamed it into the commons and into the auditorium, even though they couldn't be in the exact same room as the gym, they would still be able to see it live in the same building. How many tickets would they get for that?
I'd have to do some configuring. I mean, the auditorium's 800. How many do you think we can put in the commons, Melissa? 1,000?
1,000 in the commons?
Chair by chair.
Like, if you just put them in rows?
So I did have some thought to.
A lot, although I don't think that's, I think we should state that's not attending live graduation.
No, absolutely.
That's watching it on a screen.
Right.
I was just going to add that I did, like, in my head, I was thinking about the gymnasium. And if we were to ever have to hold it inside, we could, there are, in my head, I mean, this may not be feasible, but there are ideas like the band and the choir are mostly there to get, you know, a grade. It's their CQA. We could put them behind the stage. I know that's not ideal, but that would save that floor space. And then we could stream the speakers on the scoreboards potentially. I don't know if that's a possibility or not, if the scoreboard has that capability, the inside scoreboard has that capability.
And I'm not, I'm not sure, to be honest.
I'm not sure either, but these were just small ideas that had been circling in my head all week or three and a half days.
Sure.
How many seats were at the Cavelli? Or how many tickets?
Once, once we, 2,800, once you take out the students and like our choir and that type of sort of thing. We were not counting the band at the Cavelli.
So the parents would get how many tickets?
It could, it would be six to seven.
Six to seven.
Yeah.
I also was thinking if we also ended up having to go inside, I would, and this may not be a popular opinion, but if we were forced to go inside, I would rather limit the student tickets to two, like they always have been, so that we can accommodate those families that have a blended household. Because if it's three per kid and we have a student who is in both mom and dad situation, it's always been the two and then the four for those students. I would rather see that for those students. I know that's probably not going to be a popular opinion, but I don't want to exclude those people either. Because historically, when it's been in the gym at the old high school, that it was always two for every student and then four for a student from a blended. I think that's how it's been in the past. Is that correct, Mr. Tanszewski?
It is.
Thank you.
And then I guess my third concern with that was, you know, the, it would, if we went Cavelli route, it would be 25 every year or more, depending if they raised their price or whatnot. What if we spent that money and investing in a sound system that was like devoted to graduation? And instead of renting the chairs, why can't we just buy chairs and store them that are used for graduation to save money that way?
So I would be concerned about the sound system. I'll use the auditorium, for example. We have an amazing sound system and we, it is working, but even the teacher that's been trained to run it is not interested necessarily in continuing to do that because it is very complex. And I feel like to ask a staff member to be in charge of sound and streaming for an event like graduation, I think we have people that work really hard and try really hard, but I think that is an event that's very important to be done right. If we're going to host graduation here, whether in the gym and/or on the field or wherever, I think we have to pay to do it correctly.
I agree.
Because I think that's way too much pressure to put on a staff member. And if it goes wrong, that would just be, you can't get it back. If you can't get that moment back.
Yeah, I was just throwing ideas out there.
That's what I would say about that.
Okay.
The chairs, we have talked about that before. It's just a lot of chairs to store. And although, yes, the buildings are bigger, we're, we're just growing so fast. And I feel like at a dollar a chair to rent, it's worth the one-time fee in comparison to trying to find a place to store hundreds. Because you're talking the 400 graduates plus, we usually put the staff down there as well and the choir, all that kind of good stuff, if you're talking the stadium. So I would not recommend that, but if that's the direction we'd like to go, we can do that. I just think it's a lot of chairs to store.
Well, my other thought with the chair situation is if we're setting up outside and at the, and we've made these parameters to move inside at, in my opinion, needs to be preset like, you know, here's, here's what it is. It's outside, maybe we do a rain date, maybe we don't. But it's outside and at X time, at whatever degrees temperature or whatever percent forecast, we're making a call. And then that's when we go inside. And that we would spend the same amount of money And that we would spend the same amount, money, or whatever, on a second rental in the background so that we're not moving, because we're still under that cost of wherever, if we would have gone with the World Harvest by renting two sets of chairs. Still think it's a lot, but it's still under any cost, you know, potentially, I don't know. Also, just throwing out ideas.
No, no, I know. One thing I would like to say, I don't, I don't love the idea of a rain date, and the reason being, obviously, I can ask, I don't know today, but in my mind, I'm thinking, so last year, we used a sound company, and we also brought in, who does all our sports? Thank you, Story Rivals, to stream, so it was professionally done, which, they did a great job, both of them. So my concern becomes, will Story Rivals and the sound company be willing to commit and hold two days for us without double the pay? My guess is no. I don't, have not talked to them, because I, that option wasn't something that we had discussed. So I can ask. I also, I also, we can, we can have a graduation on the field and move it inside if that's what you choose, with understanding that it is, it is a lot of work. And so we have to have the time and the date ahead of ti, you know, for, for thought ahead of time to be able to move it. So in, in keeping with, if we were doing like two days in a row, like, let's say we said Saturday is graduation, and then Sunday is the rain date. I, I don't know, at what point do we then move inside? And we're not, we're not on the same, like, it's, it's a little jaunt away. I mean, our guys were used to be carrying things back and forth from the fields. And they have to bring in lumber and set up the stage. It's, it's not a two-second ordeal, it takes, I don't know, how long does it take?
It takes, it took days. I mean, and I'm being honest with you. The year I canceled it, I had to do it on the twen, I had to do it on the, the graduation was set for Friday evening at seven-thirty. We had rehearsal in the morning on Thursday, and we made the call then. And it took all of that to try to get everything set up. And like, you know, Dr. Perkins said, that was from the field across the parking lot. Now we're going a mile away.
So I, I get nervous about the rain date idea. I'm just worried about logistics, because that's, that's, all the behind-the-scenes things are what, you know, we're responsible for, but I just want to make sure that can all be done in a, in a timely fashion. So that, the, the moving from the outside to the inside, we've obviously done it multiple years, so it can be done. The, the moving and throwing the rain date in, that concerns me just a smidge, if we're being honest.
What time was the Cavelli Center?
Nine AM.
Nine AM, okay.
Any further comments from anybody, questions?
I have comments, they're just not coming out. I did really conservative calculations for the gym and streaming. So I did eight hundred in the auditorium and only four hundred in the commons. I was, like I said, very conservative. And then I just divided that number up with the number of graduates, I think I even added graduates. So it would be three tickets for inside the gym, and then three tickets for people in the commons, which is similar to the tickets that would be provided at Cavelli. I think it's pretty clear that students and families want to have it on our grounds. That seemed to be overwhelming to me with all the emails and responses. I kind of took a little tally, and the overwhelming response was have it on our grounds. The, the secondary was the anti-LGBTQ. So that's where my, my kind of state is, is having it on our grounds. And if it's similar tickets for, and I don't know how much it costs to rent the professionals to do it, I would rather keep it on our grounds.
So keeping it on our grounds, if someone were to motion that, would that, would keeping it on our grounds mean stadium? Or would it mean inside?
I think it means on our grounds at this point.
Just on our grounds?
Stadium, first priority, and the rain, secondary would be inside. Wouldn't that make sense?
It does make sense to me, but I-
To get more people to be able to attend, the football field would, would be the first choice, I would think. Unless we want to plan it indoors, and then-
Well, I, I'm not, and I don't even think that I'm suggesting we plan it indoor or outdoor. Historically, the board picks a date. I, I would suggest that we say that we have the date and we have the location. I think it's going to be up to parents and students where they want to have it. I'm going to presume that they're going to say stadium, because that was the overwhelming majority of emails that I received. I think this is, we're going to have to have this ongoing discussion years out, because I think that eventually class, there will be some classes that will say, I don't want to run the risk of being outside. So maybe they will automatically say, just, we'll stay it and we'll keep it in the gym. There'll be other classes that say, I don't, I sit outside at football, or cross-country, and I get wet any time, so why not just have it at the stadium or have that option? I think we say that we're going to have it on the grounds and get the feedback on where classes want to have it.
I, I concur with that. And I'm just going to add that, looking at this piece of paper, at some point, even if it rains and we have to move in and limit to two tickets, there won't even be enough space for the kids.
Correct.
So at some point, it has, it can't even, there, there's no, you either have to sit in the rain, or you're going to have to be mailed your diploma unless we go somewhere else.
Correct. Right. Right, I, I mean, I'm, I'm guessing that by the time my kids get to graduate, four years from now, if they were to have it in the gym, there might be one parent allowed, if that. In the gym.
Right.
And at that point, that, knowing this, going into his freshman year, as a parent, I think I'd start to formulate where I wanted to have it. If the reality is, is I'm only going to have one person in the gym, as I watch my son progress through high school, then I'm going to start talking to other families to say, how about a different location? Or are we okay with one person? I think it, I think it'll eventually change. I think that it'll be, I want to be here, I want to be here, and eventually, families will say, I want more than one person in the gym, if there's a rain date. And, you know, there's typically-
But, I, I was just, when you saw me typing, I was looking, trying to find our enrollment report from the last time you presented, and I couldn't find it. I was searching emails, and, but I, I think it was, I don't know when our classes go to four hundred.
They're at four hundred. This class at the middle school, it's over four hundred.
But I mean, like, in the next one, two, three years, like, when will we hit that for the graduating class?
Our eighth-grade class.
Okay, so I think that if we made a plan to do the, what we're saying, what Deb was suggesting, for the next handful of years, until we hit this threshold, and we stick with this plan of rain date note, I don't care about the, I mean, rain date would be nice, but I appreciate your comments with the, every, with, with the S companies and the, that piece, but, you know, for the next one, two, three, whatever, we decide this is our plan, and, you know, we set it out, this is what happens, you know, rain or shine, or you get two, or you, you know, whatever that plan happens to end up being, and then spend that next two or three years. And then, like, once we hit whatever that threshold is, the four hu, I just, I'm arbitrarily putting out a number and say that-
I'm envisioning, yeah, I'm envisioning for eighth-grade class, it'll be my son's class. The discussion will be, if you have it in the gym, it's going to be limited. You can sit out on the rain, and the family could be in covered areas.
Yeah.
If you want to stay on the field, or, or if you want to stay on the, the premise, or you're going to have to go somewhere else.
We've been having this discussion for six years already. We've been having this same discussion for six years, since Ben Richards was the principal. Already, why are we still having this same discussion?
Because I, I'm hearing from people that they want it to be on our land.
You know what? Each of us elected to this board has had an immediate interest that brings perspective. We all either have students, or we have the teacher within shouting distance in our houses. I have been through heaven only knows what this week. And been asked to recuse myself, all sorts of things. Like I said, I've been on here for six years, and we've talked about an outside venue for six years. More times than not, it's been raining. More times than not, it has been raining, okay? There's various reasons we've been unsuccessful in our quest for a venue. But for some reason, though, we acted like this was some giant surprise this year. My husband shared concerns about my daughter, to reiterate, to reiterate, the need for an off-site venue. Not something that wasn't already on the table. Not something that was not already on the table. I have since come to realize that I truly, truly, truly overestimated this community. Two weeks ago, this community played the heart of the Warrior football game. And I was really, really, really proud of being part of this community, and proud of the compassion and inclusiveness. After the past four days, not anymore, not anymore. It is obviously extremely limited. Maybe, my, my friend said to me, you shouldn't say this in a board meeting, you're a board member. I said, no, I'm not, I'm a parent first. And John and Kathy both stood up at Tuesday night, and the first thing they did when they introduced themselves, they said, we're parents first, and you want me to be a parent first. That's why I'm here, is because we're parents first, Roger's a teacher's husband first, and then he's a board member. After the past days, I've come to realize, this community is not inclusive. We're not inclusive, not when it comes to my kid. Maybe it's when you're playing sports you are, maybe it's when we can make the news you are, maybe when it comes to when it's not about your votes, maybe then you are. But it certainly appears that it's more important, at least to the last voices, that we use the stadium for what? Than use the stadium. But if my child cannot walk across the stage because of it, shame. Shame on you, shame on all of you, shame on you. Yes, look right at me.
We cannot engage. Okay.
You have a board member who calls a student, saying, hey, I leave you. And you call me non-inclusive, you don't know me.
Ma'am, you're out of order.
But I do get to watch you.
I need you to go.
I get it, I'm walking out.
Thank you.
You can't leave that.
Okay.
She addresses me.
All right, ma'am.
I, you're cool, she addresses me. I'm going to thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay. Let's, um-
Can I say something?
Sure.
Okay, I'm sorry. Going backwards a little bit, but, so Brittany's not here to speak for herself, but the amount of time that goes into finding an outside facility, I, I'm not, I'm not asking, I'm literally telling you guys, we can't survey people every year. This isn't going to work.
I know.
It's, it's, it's not, we are, we are, we were lucky to find these two. The reason World Harvest is a weeknight is because it's booked on the weekends. The SHOT, the, all these facilities that we have been, I mean, I could list them all off, I did the last board meeting. We can't, we can have it on the facilities, we can have it at the facilities the next three years, we can change it with the class of four hundred, but we can't survey every year. Because I can't, I don't know how to find a facility, I don't know how to best serve the needs of all of the students. But when my hands are tied waiting for these results, and then that's really hoping we find something. It took us two years to find these facilities, two years. Not for a lack of not trying and not calling. I mean, I can give anybody, any information on every place we called, how many times we called. My number one choice would be Dennison University, my gosh, we called them umpteen times. They will not take us, period, will not take us.
Ben, Ben Richards tried when he was community president, multiple times, to get Dennison to take us. Multiple times, he was principal.
My, you know, I'm going to be a graduation, no matter where it's at. We're, as a school district, going to make it absolutely wonderful for our kids, because that's what they deserve. And that's what's going to happen. I, I only presented the outside option because I was under the impression that's what we wanted for our kids, as we're growing. If that's not what we want today, that's fine, but I, I don't see how we can possibly do an annual survey and think it's realistic for me to find us a venue to hold our kids. So that, that's just my, my piece on that.
Okay. So-
To me, the pros of the Cavelli Center is it's on a Saturday, which I think is, from what I'm hearing, people like the Saturdays, and then the kids can have their parties in the evening. And it accommodates a lot more parents and siblings and grandparents and all that. So those are two pros that I think, yes, it's expensive, but I'm thinking about what's best for kids, to have their surroundings there with them, is that best? Or is it best to only have a handful, or two or three tickets to attend and see them walk across the stage? I mean, those are the things that, that I'm thinking about. And I've always, my twenty-eight years on the board have always said, what's best for the kids? And that's what we've got to focus on here tonight, is what's best for the kids. These surveys, I mean, there was only a handful of people that responded to them, so I, I don't take that as a real good indication of what, what everybody's thinking. So, anyway, what's, what's best for kids? Yeah, I, I have, I can still remember nineteen sixty-nine, walking across at the football field, and we had a beautiful day, and it worked out, but we just can't count on that anymore. And I know we've always been talking about, the last several years, about having a venue that you, we could accommodate everybody with, so. And here we have one. Yeah, it's not going to be cheap, but it's going to accommodate everybody, so. I don't know, it's a tough decision, but we've got to make one tonight, and, and move with it, and carry on and, and go. And I think we owe it to, to everyone to, to make a decision and stick with it, and so they can plan and move forward. And the other thing is, if we do go to the Cavelli Center, there's always options for the future, too. But if we don't put our foot in the door now, it may close, and that may, those options may not be open. And I don't know, is a Dennison, is it something we can look at in the future?
They won't, they won't take us.
They won't even consider us, so that's, that option's-
Short of begging, literally, they won't take anybody but grandals.
Are they not do, I'm just completely curious here. Are they not doing it at all?
They're doing grandals.
Okay, and it's just because, okay, have they, okay, never mind.
They just won't, yeah.
Got it.
We even offered to go on Grandal's Day, we'll go before Grandal, we'll go after Grandal. They said no, so, I don't know, I don't understand it, but they will not take us.
And I know you gave us the list, but two new places popped up on my, one of the many communications I had, but does OSU Newark have space big enough? They don't, they don't have space big enough, or they don't have?
I can't remember.
No, okay. Or COT?
I have to give you a list of everywhere I've been talking in the last five years.
I know, I just, I didn't hear those on the list. You never know when there's a place that someone didn't, you know, think about.
We checked there, they don't have the capacity, and I checked Ohio American.
COTC doesn't, I bet, then, if OSU Newark doesn't, okay. Those were just two that I hadn't heard on lists before, and I always wanted to double-check. Not that it would probably even be feasible for this year, anyway, but-
No, I mean, I mean, I think honestly, the, I think what Roger said is right. I think we just need to make a decision, you need to make a decision tonight, either which way, and we have to just live by that for this year. I don't think we have time to, I mean, I, I don't actually even know where to call to start, to find something different, so I think we just have to-
No, I don't, I was literally curious for, for their capacity for future years.
Okay. Any other discussion on this? So right now, on the table, it is seven, nothing?
There's nothing on the table.
Nothing on the table.
Oh, it's just, it is what it is. It's twenty-first at the Cavelli right now.
We voted to remove it, didn't we, so?
Yes, we're, yeah, we approved it. That's on the table, that's what's been approved by the board, so.
It was, we approved the Cavelli in August, so that's what's there, so it's either leave it or change it.
Wait a minute, so it's already, we've already approved the Cavelli Center for that Saturday, correct?
Right. But-
Okay, and then somebody comes up with a motion or-
Right, at the time it was approved, I don't believe we knew about the parking.
We didn't, or the, all the things.
So.
I think out, out of all the things, the parking is my biggest, in the overall expense.
That, and the money, so. So we either keep it as is, or we make an amendment to-
Make a motion.
Make a motion, I'm sorry, to move it to our campus, correct? All right, we'll see where it goes. I make a motion, move it to our campus.
Can I amend it?
Please.
To be held within the gym.
Okay.
Second.
So the motion on the floor is to move it to our facilities in the gymnasium.
Are you going to stay a date or anything right now?
Oh, on the, the original planned date.
Twenty-first, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'll make sure.
May twenty-first, do we have a time or that can come later?
I, I would say if we're doing it on our own facilities, I think ten would be ideal. So we have a little wiggle room for setup and everything else in the morning if there's last-minute things.
Okay, can I, can I offer an earlier time? District track, is it like that day? If we can have it at nine or nine-thirty?
We can have it at whatever time you want, but when I talked to the athletic director yesterday, he said those times won't be confirmed till closer than which one, which slot will fall in.
Okay. I just know historically, because my, it's old, they almost always are running in the afternoon, but-
We can absolutely have it at nine, we will, we will make it work.
What time was graduation last year?
I don't remember. Do you guys remember?
I thought it was at noon.
Didn't we have two?
We didn't.
But we had two dates.
Right.
It was at ten. Yeah, because it was still really hot, ten, yeah.
Somebody didn't even get to run because they were so late. So if we could, maybe-
We can do it at nine.
Yeah, let's do it.
We'll make it work.
Let's do it at nine, if we can.
Do you want to include that in the motion? Because if it changes, then the board has to vote to change it if it's included in the motion.
I'm fine with that being in the motion.
What?
Nine o'clock.
Okay.
I said the plan being nine o'clock, but if you include in your motion, if we have to change it, then the board has to change it, Casey can't change.
Okay.
Can we include in the motion to let Casey change it if we need to?
Yeah, you wouldn't do that, it's basically give her the ability to change if needed.
Yeah. Because she'll have eyes and ears on the ground to know what's going on with, with that. The other, other question I have with relation to that, what time is the track meet generally over? Like, could it be an evening ceremony per se?
There, I think there's three, the, three divisions, right, Tan?
The one I think, wouldn't softball be playing later?
Yeah, there's a possibility.
Okay.
I mean-
Nine AM sunny good.
I looked at the dates for softball and I, I think I looked at the dates for softball and baseball and they're, like, Wednesday through something, I, I thought, because it, it's in between sectionals and regionals or it's in between districts and sectionals or check with Jay, because I looked specifically at softball and baseball.
He, he did say, team sports like that, where you're not dealing with, like, a lot of times, track is like on the individual level. He said team sports like that, they will work with the school district to change if it interferes with graduation. It's just track is so many teams, you, it wouldn't work. But something like the softball or baseball, we would be able, he said they would be able to change that if need be.
I think it's, every single year I've been on the board, I've always had to run as soon as graduation was over to Hilliard to wa-
To go track?
To watch my kids run at districts, but they've almost always run at like one or later.
So then it's probably safe to say we'd probably be at that time.
In the afternoon for track, for, for our school.
Okay.
Specifically spoke to a parent that his child did, got their diploma and did not get to run because they didn't get, they got caught in traffic, so.
Okay, so then maybe nine o'clock is better.
Do we, no, go ahead, ma'am.
I, I don't know if this is open for discussion. Do we want to look for facilities down the road or is that a, something we want to stop doing?
No, I think we continue to look and call for next year and we start as soon as we are able to.
For next year or for the eighth grade class or for over four hundred or what it, what?
I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, it's just, because that would be helpful to me so I can make sure that-
I would say if a class reaches four hundred, then maybe we need to start looking for more options.
When, yeah, when would we have to decrease the number in the gym?
Okay, let me do some, let me do some figuring and then I can communicate that.
And are you only open to if she can get a Saturday?
It's a good question as well.
And I, and I'll be honest in telling you, that twenty-five thousand is a similar cost for like places like the SHOT and the Licking Heights Go. So that, it does seem like a lot of money, but it, it is fairly comparable. Just so you know, the other one was actually significantly inexpensive for a venue like that. And we don't have to decide all of that today if we don't want.
No.
Are we only deciding this for this year's?
Yeah, no, thank you, I appreciate that.
Yes, this motion is to amend the twenty-one, twenty-two school calendar to change graduation to basically be held in the gym on Saturday, May twenty-first at nine o'clock AM, with some potential to change time if needed.
And we can get the details about overflow later, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, is there any further discussion on this? Everyone understands what they're voting on. A yes vote amends it to the school, a no vote keeps it at Cavelli. All right, Mr. Jones?
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mr. Zani?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. We are now ready for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mr. Zani?
Yes.
We are adjourned at five fifty-six.